Thank you. Good evening. Welcome, everybody in attendance. I believe we have one board member that is joining us. Courtney Cavalier remotely, so thank you. With that said, welcome, everybody, to our July 19 business meeting here at 5:30. With that said, we will call the meeting to order. And Ms. Treadway, will you please determine if we have a quorum present?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum.
Wonderful. Thank you. With that, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Bellingham, thank you for leading us in the pledge. Ms. Cavalier is in attendance remotely tonight. She is currently located in Massachusetts in a public location at Panera, 8 Steeple Street, Mashpee, Massachusetts. She will be fully participating as a voting member in the school board meeting via Google Hangouts or Skype, but anyway, she's on there. Ms. Cavalier, can you hear us okay?
I still can.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. With that said, this brings us to item number four, the approval of the agenda. And I do have one request that Superintendent Sessler are going to add, which is item, we're going to put it as item 11G. And board members, you should all have a memorandum here. And it's a request of a leave of absence. Please consider the following, point two, leave of absence for Mr. Dunigan. So with that, we're going to put that to item 11G. Okay? So that is now on the agenda. With that said, I will entertain a motion to approve of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to add a discussion about the recently removed sports co-ops.
Wonderful. So we have a motion to add a discussion item. Is that a discussion item or an action item?
A discussion item.
Discussion item? Okay, thank you. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, we have...
Give it to Mr. Olson.
A second by Mr. Olson. And further discussion on this item? Okay, so we will vote. And Ms. Treadway, because Ms. Cavalier is remote, every vote tonight is a roll call. So will you please do a roll?
John Bellingham?
Nay.
Courtney Cavalier?
Nay.
Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
Cassie Steves?
Aye.
Caroline Treadway, nay. Chad Wolf?
Nay.
The motion fails, 4 to 3.
So with that said, I will entertain a approval for the agenda as stated. Also move Mr. Chair.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bellingham, a second by Ms. Treadway. All those in favor, I'm sorry, you got to do a roll call.
John Bellingham?
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier? Courtney Cavalier. Richard Olson?
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud?
Aye.
Cassie Steves?
Aye.
Caroline Treadway, aye. Chad Wolf?
Aye.
The motion passes 7 to 0.
Okay, thank you. This brings us to item number five, community comment. Anybody is welcome to step up to the mic. We do have a 15-minute time limit per topic, three-minute time limit per speaker. I will do my best to keep you to three minutes. If you go three minutes and 15 seconds, we're not going to cut you off. Try your best. If it's going long, I'll politely, if you will, interrupt you and just ask if you're close. And if everybody who comes up and speaks would so kindly sign and provide whatever information. And whoever speaks, you can do that at the end if you want, instead of at the beginning, however you want to do it. So wonderful. Please introduce yourself.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, I guess. Mitch Anderson, I am the assistant varsity boys soccer coach. And I guess part of the reason that I was hoping to be here is null and void at this point. But I want to start just by thanking Superintendent Sessler, the board members that took time to talk to me over the last couple of weeks about the dissolution of the co-op and the details surrounding the vote last month. Also wanted to thank Ed Friesen, Mindy Reader, and many of our current and past families for their support of our soccer program throughout the co-op. As you can see, we've got a lot of support here, including BA players who in two short years or in a year are now no longer going to be able to play at this point, which I hope we can talk about later. But as stated, each of you, we do indeed have participants in our boys soccer program from BA. This incoming year, we will have at least one junior, two sophomores, and three eighth graders participating in 2021, contrary to the statistics that were given last month. I also want to clarify that we have only one, that I, one eighth-grade boy who is undecided on his participation in soccer or football due to the fact that now this year he can't play football in the fall. So he's kind of undecided at this point. All these players were part of our high school program last year, playing at least at the 9A level, meaning they were part of our high school program. Last year, we had 61 players, which allowed us to have three teams. This year, we are estimating 65 to 70 players due to the incoming numbers and our association teams. This will allow us to have four teams, 9A, B, JV, and a varsity. And with these numbers, it allows us to place athletes at the proper level to ensure their growth and safety in the sport. So it also allows more athletes to have field time instead of sitting on the bench, because our numbers last year, we had 20 on each team. You don't, we just don't have playing time for that many players. So we're going to have a lot more kids on the bench if we don't get that fourth team. Over the past eight years, head coach Brendan Cox, who was on vacation this week, so he couldn't be here, has worked to build a culture of community with everyone who plays soccer, our coaching staff, Jim Johnson, Bill Favreau, and myself. We know this. We pride ourselves on showing the team that we are just that, a team. We care about our athletes and the fact that they represent the Faribault community as a whole. We make it very clear that each person who steps onto the field knows that they are a valuable part of our team, no matter their race, class, school, or social status. In dissolving our co-op, we will put a wedge in that intentional effort to unite all of what makes Faribault what it is. I just pointed in the vote at the school board last month that took action to end our co-op, a program that directly affected us as a team. As a coaching staff, we were not informed of this vote. In hindsight, I wish we could have done and would have done more sooner, but that space wasn't allowed, not knowing about this vote until the end. The statements presented by athletic director, past athletic director, former athletic director, Mr. Badger, stated we only had seven BA participants because football was postponed in the spring, and that is false. As I stated earlier, one of those boys may have played football. The rest, the other six, have all said that they are soccer players and they will continue to be soccer players. I'm also frustrated and confused as to why three sports were singled out in the conversation of this co-op. If we follow the flow chart presented by Mr. Badger that was approved by this board, at least nine sports fall into the discussion to talk about dissolution. So I'm confused as to why, and I've never gotten an answer to that, as to why these three sports were the three picked right now. Soccer is one of the fastest-growing sports in the U.S., and dissolving this cooperative is not allowing student athletes in our district the opportunity to play with pride for their community. When we, when are we as a community going to take pride in the diversity of learning opportunities this town has to offer? When are we going to stop punishing families for choosing the learning environment that is best for their children? I've heard the argument that in choosing BA, a family is choosing certain participations and certain activities. And that may be true, but if you ask me, BA's families are still contributing by paying taxes and engaging in the Faribault community life. Last point I want to address is that as an elective school board member, you represent Faribault. My hope is that as adults and as elected officials, we would be more inclusive to all the taxpayers that support education, which is greater than just those that attend Faribault Public School. I hope that all of our schools in Faribault can start working together for the betterment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will just reiterate, if you don't, no, you're good. I'll reiterate, if you don't know, if you haven't been to a school board meeting where there's community comment, we have a policy, policy 206, and we do not interact with people that present. So I just want to let everybody know we're following our policies.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Bill Favreau. I am the 9A soccer coach for Faribault Senior High. And I just wanted to read a letter that one of our parents sent to us. Why my children go to a parochial school? They have always gone to a parochial school since pre-K for personal and religious reasons. When it came to choosing schools for my children, Faribault always seemed like an inclusive community. We have never felt isolated or targeted until now. When the kids were very little, K through 5, flyers were sent home for soccer, wrestling, gymnastics, dance, all co-op sports, pre-recruiting to get them into their youth programs. How do you know if your child will like that sport activity, or if they have a natural talent, until they actually try that sport? As a new parent and new to the community, I would not have known about these programs without these flyers. One child is all Cardinal sports, the other is all Falcon sports. I cannot choose what my child will like or do for extracurricular activities. As parents know, all children are very different within their household. Why do we have to limit their choices or options for sports regardless of where they go to school? My 10th grader has played soccer and wrestled since preschool. He has not deviated from these two sports, even during COVID restrictions. How many parents signed their kids up for soccer due to COVID restrictions and uncertainty for the football season last fall? Four, maybe five, from Faribault Public and BA combined. How many of those kids played on the varsity or JV team? Zero. What are the statistics for going to state with soccer, one section championship, and state appearance in 2015? We had two BA kids that were young bench contributors, gymnastics, wrestling, dance, and other co-op sports. Oh, I'm sorry. What are the statistics for going to state with soccer? Yes, gymnastics and other sports. How have the students from BA helped to hear these statistics? Are FPS students filling all these spots? Are the students filling the varsity and JV spots to be competitive with other schools, or are they just filling them in to fill in? What about subs and alternatives, or subs and alternates? Don't you need those students to help replace injuries and to relieve players? How many kids actually stay the entire season? How many drop out before the first game match? We have very few that quit, by the way, after they start. And in fact, we have a lot of kids that come in and sign up after the season starts. That's my little injection there. Soccer and wrestling are notorious for this. You get a lot of kids in the beginning of the season, then many quit. What numbers are being used by the school board? The initial numbers or actual team roster numbers? I was told by a school board member that there are about 70 kids playing soccer. Is this for all boys and girls, JV, varsity, and C squad 9th grade? Are some of the kids playing on varsity and JV to fill holes? And I can clarify that we just try to place players where they fit. And because of numbers, sometimes players are forced to be on a certain team due to the grade they're on. So if a senior that never want, that never played wants to try, we can't put him any lower than JV. Is there a financial reason behind the F, behind this for FPS to dissolve the co-op? How much does FPS directly pay for co-op students to play? What about booster money that comes from the community, not just FPS alumni, parents, and local businesses? Are any of those funds helping with these costs? What about property tax dollars? Is any of that spent on athletics? Many FPS BA athletes get free and reduced meals. Does this apply to their sports fees too? Who picks up this tab? Spanning this co-op is potentially taking away opportunities and scholarships from the children. In the past 15 to 20 years, how many BA students have gone on to college with athletic scholarships because of Faribault Public Schools co-op? And what are those statistics? This will not only reflect poorly on Faribault Public School, the community of Faribault, but it will also affect BA. Parents may take their children out of BA or not even enroll them and have them go elsewhere outside of Faribault to play sports. This is a bad decision all around for everyone involved. Let's keep the co-op to keep the community together. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Olson.
Can that be entered to the record also? I would like to get a copy of that.
Superintendent Sessler, any reason why? Can you send me all that information our way, then I can send it to the board. That'd be great. Thank you.
Excuse me, do we know who penned that letter?
Oh, yeah.
I, yes, I can give you that information. It's Mary Nelson.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Jim Johnson. I'm the JV boys soccer coach, so I appreciate the time that you've given us to speak today. So I want to start out by just saying, in order for a good change process to occur, data has to be collected. Historical experience is collected. A decision is formulated by looking at that data. We question the decision that you made because none of us were involved in that process. None of the parents and the kids behind us were involved in that process. That ripple in that pond is great. But again, we're the ones being affected by the stone that you threw. So we wonder, how is that decision made? Because it's affecting us. There was no opinions collected from the soccer team. There was no data. There was no questions or conversation from parents asking how this decision affected them. We're just left with restrictive choices to make, which will adversely affect the students involved. Closing down this co-op leaves the families and athletes with a short amount of time to figure out what their future sports endeavors are going to look like. They've got players back here that are sophomores and juniors. They have to put a stop to what they're doing to figure out what they're going to do for their college careers. Do they join football? Do they join a sport that their schools provide? There should have been a plan to continue to support the players and families, supported this co-op when it was so badly needed when it was first started. This doesn't affect the high school sports programs, but it does, and it also affects the youth programs outside of that. If an athlete plays soccer, he's going to play fall soccer. Around the summertime comes, he's not going to play the youth soccer league if he doesn't have a soccer program in the fall to supplement. So then our youth program suffers. The association then loses numbers and revenue. This is a definite impact that's not favorable to our community. Not sure how the decision was made, but again, what options were there? Were there other options other than just taking the axe and cutting off the head of the turkey? Was there something that was more long-term that we could have avoided so much pain? How about a solution to putting out a date further in time? Let's just say 2026. Let's tell everyone this is our drop-dead date. Let's make it clear that this is our drop-dead date. This is the year the co-op will be dissolved. This will allow existing players to be grandfathered in and finish their high school sports career with the potential of chasing a college aspiration. This will allow future parents to help start their children off right, making a decision on sport that they're going to do without disruption. Putting the dissolution date out there for enough families, enough time to make the right choices, and grandfathering the curtain kids that would allow them to finish what they've started. This would still allow the Faribault School Board to get the dissolving of the co-op. And it also allows the athletes to get a peace of mind that they get to finish their sport without stress, without having to start over at a new school or potentially a new sport. Putting out this date gives everyone, including the community, enough time to make the changes and mentally move forward from this. Please reconsider the decision that's been made. Consider putting out a hard date, something far enough out in the future for allow families to plan better and allow to soften the blow. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I would like to have that entered into the record. Also would like to get a copy of that, please.
Thank you. Anybody else want to come forward and share a community comment?
My name is Dean Anderson. I'm not a coach. Currently, I used to be in the summer with girls, as my girls grew up, stepgirls grew up. Currently have a son going into 8th grade at Bethlehem Academy. My biggest point is, part of our choice to go to BA was, he tried, he tried the public school system. He gave it a good effort. He, he's actually gone there two times in his academic, you know, long academic career. But both times when he went there, he missed the small school. He missed that part of it. And part of his decision to go back to this was he could still enjoy all of Faribault sports-wise by being able to participate in the sports that he loves. He plays hockey and he plays, he plays soccer. You know, it's hard to, it's hard to, to stay around if he, if he doesn't like the school system and we have to make a choice of, is he going to play sports? Is he going to switch sports? And completely, you know, erase what he's done for, you know, his 13 years? Or are we going to, you know, look elsewhere for, for that? And we don't want that. I don't work here. I don't work in this town. I work in Northfield. Our kids go to school here. All of ours have gone here. And we'd like to continue that. It's not, you know, it's not a, just light decision we've made. It's, it'd be much easier for me to, to live there and just have taken them there at a younger age and just ask what we're doing. But we've chosen to be here. You know, I think a lot of the numbers get real messed up with COVID last year, with, you know, football players from the high school actually playing soccer and not participating in, in football like they would have, or, or others, you know, fall-type sports. And it, it made the numbers not quite exactly what they really would have been if COVID hadn't been here. We don't know if COVID's coming back. We don't know what's coming back. We can't plan for that, and we hope it doesn't. But there's also been other things like where the, the public schools have approached BA about, about co-ops with TRAP when it started, back in 2000, I think, 12. There were some public school kids that came there. I know there's some classes they take up there with the agriculture department. There's also some, there was some talk about a baseball co-op this past season, which never did happen. But, but it was, it was the public school approaching BA about it. So I think when there are numbers there, it doesn't make sense to not count numbers because of, if there's rules or something about it, common sense would kind of lead people to, to, to count the kids that are there, that really are, you know, that's part of their choice of being in Faribault and choosing BA is that they can do these sports. And if it's not there, that changes their choice, their choices. So that's really all I have to say about it. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. Any other community members want to come forward? That's forward. We're within our 15-minute time slot on, on, on one certain subject, if you want. Yes, sir.
I'll sign it after him. So I came here tonight.
Sorry to interrupt you. Would you just identify yourself, please?
Richard Daughterwich.
Thank you.
So I have the same concerns, and I was a little perplexed why this vote happened. You know, all of a sudden, I know this has been going on a while. Last year, this same issue came up. And hopefully, it just disappeared, but obviously it didn't. And I really don't understand. I went to the Faribault Public School. All my kids went to this school, you know, and I don't understand why we would dissolve that partnership or that, you know, there, there's no logic behind it, in my opinion. And I, you know, I just came here to, this is crazy. And I, you know, I just came here to, this is crazy, in my opinion. I thought we were one community, but obviously we're not one community. It seems like, you know, we're just trying to divide, you know, this community up and for a tiny little insufficient, you know, issue that doesn't really affect anything. It doesn't affect the dollars, and we can all say that, but I pay taxes. You know, I paid taxes here for fifty-some years, and you know, I don't see how that, you know, YBA should be eliminated from any of this. That's all I really get. And I think there's a whole lot of people in this community that's upset about it, and I just would hope there would be more. I really appreciate that the coaches, and there again, here we, decisions are made without all the input that made, it just made no sense at all. And I didn't realize it till tonight that nobody was involved. You know, it's just somebody just had a vote, and it seemed kind of convenient that the athletic director on his last two days, you know, that he was, you know, pushed the issue, and then we didn't have a full school board to vote on it. It just didn't seem right, you know? It looks pretty, pretty bad to me.
Thank you for your comments and coming forward. Any other questions or public comments? That has hit the fifteen-minute time limit on that subject, but if there's any other subjects that community members want to talk about, they're welcome to come forward. I'll just offer one more time. If there's any other community members that want to come forward and share their thoughts on any other topic, they're welcome to. We had a large group several months ago about a different topic, and out of respect to everybody, I do want to let everybody know, there is no co-op action item on the agenda. You're welcome to stay for the entire meeting. You're welcome to leave at any point. All I'd ask is that there's no disruption during the meeting and whatnot. So I just want to be upfront and honest with everybody that our agenda is published last Wednesday, and there is no item on here regarding Fairbowl Public School BA co-op. Okay? Thank you. Okay, this brings us to item number five, recognition awards presentation. There are no items, or there are none, so this brings us to item number, I'm sorry, that was item number six, recognition awards presentation. There is none. Brings us to item number seven, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Ms. Tredway. Ms. Tredway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Tredway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven zero.
Thank you for that. This brings us to item number eight, eight A, retirement. Consider approval of retirement for Deborah Melker. Nineteen years of service. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Ms. Steves. Any further discussion on this item? I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Melker for nineteen years here in the Fairbowl Public Schools. Appreciate all of her efforts and wish her nothing but the best in her future endeavors, so. With that, Ms. Tredway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Tredway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you for that. Brings us to nine A. They are the minutes from the June 21st meeting. And then the next item is nine B. Nine B one is the consider approval of the Riverbend Nature Center fiscal year 2022 community school contract. Mr. Sescer, would you like to briefly touch on this or Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I think I'll have, since we did not have a finance committee meet this week, finance committee meeting, I'm going to have Mr. Adams answering any of your questions that you may have on each of these topics.
Are there any questions on the community school contract with Riverbend Nature Center at this time?
Mr. Chair, if I may, so just maybe for transparency for the general public, maybe just briefly what the contract is about and how that benefits our kids and things like that.
Absolutely.
I can do that part, then you can do the cost part.
Perfect.
So we use Riverbend Nature Center quite often for a lot of our field trips with the kids. They have actually incorporated the science standards within each of those pieces, so when the kids go up there, they're not just doing a field trip, they're also learning and actually achieving some of the standards that are embedded into the science standards. So it's a great program. We use it K-12, pre-K-12, and we've gotten a ton of use out of it. We've got a great relationship with Riverbend as well.
Correct, and this is our third contract that we have with them in our series of three, so this covers the community school component, and it really ties into our health and wellness is the only part of our strategic plan.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Wonderful, thank you. Hearing no other questions, I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Mr. Chair, also moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Bellingham, a second by Ms. Tredway. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Tredway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Tredway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven zero.
Thank you for that. Next item is nine B two, consider approval of classroom AV updates.
I'm going to have Mr. Rutherford speak to this item.
All right. So what we're trying to do here is tie in all of our audiovisual equipment into one sound source. That's the main function of it, and then at the same time, upgrade all of the cabling. And so right now, there's quite a bit of old cabling that's frankly out of date that we want to replace, and then all sound and video will all come through one system by replacing all of that cabling.
Mr. Rutherford, is this a, if you will, multi-year project, or will everything be done in one year?
That's a great question. Honestly, it depends on materials right now. That's the biggest factor. We're working with phone station local company, and their biggest thing is we don't know for sure yet because we don't know what materials we can get. So that's why we went for kind of forty classrooms right now. That's what they thought they were going to be able to get at the moment. We would like to do all of the elementary classrooms at some point. We'd be coming back for approval on the rest of them if we can make that happen.
And so is the hope to get whatever classrooms done prior to school starting, or will this be able to be done still some during the school year?
Yeah, so I mean, we wouldn't disrupt classrooms, right? So the only way we would do it during the school year is if we could, if we knew that a classroom could get done and cleaned up within a timeframe that where students were not there.
Will it require any kind of training part of the teachers or just not looking for multiple remotes anymore?
That's exactly right. What it does is it simplifies everything. That's exactly the point.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, when was the last time they updated cabling? How old is this cabling?
Yeah, it's at least ten years old. So the HDMI cabling that's there, which frankly, somebody had some good foresight to do HDMI back ten years ago, but it is one of the first generations of HDMI, and so it actually doesn't even support the newest 4K resolution. And so it updates to the most recent version of HDMI for the actual audio part, but it has been ten years for that cabling.
So you get poor quality or what?
Yeah, it's not as good a quality, A. B, they're aging to the point of needing to replace some of them anyway. Like, I know I'm going to have to do some of the classrooms no matter what, just on a replacement basis, just because they're not functioning. And the third thing is that the cables were never placed as a wall port, and so instead of being like something you plug into the wall, it's a big coil that's sitting on the floor. And so, and it's a big thick cable. So you have to take that big thick cable that's in a coil and plug it into now a laptop, which makes it a lot less, there's a lot less fidelity there.
Was there technology of this five, ten years ago or what?
In the last ten years, we've switched primarily from using VGA, so that's a lot of the blue cables, the cables with the blue ends that you've seen a computer plugged into. That's switched entirely to HDMI at this point. So we actually have a bunch of old monitors that are VGA that we can't even get to function with our current laptops because the technology is so outdated.
And I think that's the flavor to the conversation we're missing, is we've updated our fleets over the last three years, especially with this new influx of money where we went one-to-one at all levels, where we need to get our classrooms to match that technology so that we can be efficient and allow our teachers the most tools that they have at their disposal to be efficient in the classroom.
It also allows for mobile use, and so a teacher can take their laptop and they can be plugged into their desk, and that means that's the highest fidelity, but they can also move around the classroom with both their iPad and their laptop and be able to use it wherever they want to in the room.
My concern is, I don't know if anybody agrees, but like when you buy a computer, it's outdated by the time you get it out of the box. I don't know, you've probably heard that.
Yep.
The same thing with cabling is that you get it on the box, it's, oh, it's outdated. Now we, I mean, how often do we have to do this?
Yeah, there's no foreseeable end to using HDMI as the standard for cabling. There's, there's really no, you know, you're not wrong that things do update, and that's the way technology works, but there's no foreseeable end to HDMI.
Like, people get these iPhones, ten, twelve, fourteen, they gotta get it. It just like comes out, what, twice a year or more? I don't know. It just, we can't keep on doing this, though.
Yeah.
You know, somebody comes up with a new type of cable, oh, we better get it.
Yeah, no, part of the reason I want to do this project is frankly to set us up for the next ten years, to make sure that we have infrastructure in place so that we're solid on that piece and it just works for teachers for the, again, the foreseeable future.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Appreciate the information. So this item nine B two is a action item, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the classroom AV updates.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Ms. Steves. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Tredway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Tredway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you. This brings us to nine B three, consider approval of office staff updates and modifications. Mr. Adams?
All right. As you guys are well aware, we have a lot of changes in staffing coming with our Falcons' Forward Vision 2024 plan, and we're feeling that definitely across the district, so this request is to allow us to house some more of those staff in the district office here as we work with our footprint to move staff from here out to buildings and vice versa.
Mr. Chair, is this new staff or are we bringing in staff from our other schools?
With, it's a combination of staff that we're bringing in with our ESSR plan as well as staff that exist today.
So, but the ESSR, is this temporary?
Correct.
With the staff? Temporary, like three years?
For three years, yep.
And then they're gone?
Yep.
But the modifications we're making is to give us a little bit more privacy and also to close off some of those, if you go, what's that, the west hallway, there are those three open office areas, and we do get a lot of disruptions coming in and out of there. So the main function of this, I believe, is to construct those walls and doors for those three office areas to give us a little bit more privacy.
Yep, and that'll also allow for more security of the information that those individuals oversee and house.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the office staff updates and modifications fiscal
Mr. Chair, also move.
Thank you, Mr. Bellingham. We have a motion. Thank you, Ms. Tredway, all the way from Massachusetts.
Cavalier.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cavalier, sorry. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, Ms. Tredway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Tredway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven zero.
Okay, thank you. Brings us to item nine B four, consider approval of drivers' ed fees fiscal year 2022.
So the proposal you have before you is to increase fees both in the classroom and behind the wheel by five dollars. As you can see, it's been over three years since we last increased fees, and after you factor inflationary things like gas, teacher costs, and all of that, we just have found that we need to increase those rates at this time.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve nine B four, drivers' ed fees fiscal year 2022.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Tredway, a second by Ms. Steves. Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair, if I may, actually, the five-dollar increase, I think, is quite small when you consider inflation. It's been three years, the rate of inflation, fuel, et cetera, so I'm quite happy it's only five dollars, to be honest with you. I think it's, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, we have a motion by Ms. Tredway, a second by Ms. Steves. Ms. Tredway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
No.
Jerry Robichaud.
Yes.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Tredway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes six one.
Okay, thank you for that. This brings us to item ten, the policy committee. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Thank you, Mr. Rutherford. Brings us to item ten, the policy committee. Policy ten, excuse me, ten A, item ten A is consider approval of the following policies, policy five three three, which is the wellness, and policy eight zero two, which is the disposition of obsolete equipment and material. Historically, I think we've bundled both of these together when we have an action item unless somebody requests that they be voted on separately, so. And this is the second reading, so this has been previewed, and anybody from the policy committee, has there been any changes? Nope, everything's, okay, wonderful, thank you. So with that said, I'll entertain an approval for both policy five three three, which is Wellness Committee, or policy, excuse me, and policy eight zero two, which is the disposition of obsolete equipment and material.
So moved.
We have a motion by Ms. Steves.
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Tredway. Any further discussion on either of these policies? Hearing none, Ms. Tredway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Tredway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. Item number eleven, other matters. So eleven A, consider approval to interview up to four superintendent search firms. I'll start this out. Mr. Robichaud and myself and Ms. Yocum, we are in the draft phase of trying to put together an RFP that the board had authorized the three of us to work on, and hopefully we'll have that done in draft form out to the school board by the end of this week. Is that, is that what we're thinking? Yes, wonderful. And please note there that it says up to four search firms. Yes, wonderful. Um, and please note there that it says up to four search firms. We may get six or seven that wanna chime in. I think that the key there is we'll try to identify as a board, um, four of them. Try to get them here sometime in August, whether it's at the, the, um, existing, uh, work session or if we schedule a special work session, or if it's at the existing, uh, board meeting. The way we're, uh, setting up the RFP is kind of an option A and an option B. If you remember right, um, two months ago, I think it was, Mr. Robishaw, is that right, two months ago? Uh, as I was gone last month, we spoke about engaging a professional firm to help us with that superintendent profile. And so there may be some firms that are interested in only submitting a bid on that superintendent profile. And there may be some firms that are interested in submitting a firm on that superintendent profile as well as the entire search process. So, um, that's how we're starting to lay it out. And I'll, I'll open it up for any questions or comments and thoughts. And, Mr. Robishaw, maybe before any questions, uh, you wanna add anything, or, or did I state anything incorrectly?
No, I think you covered it very well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll open it up for any questions, comments.
Are we going local, in-state, or are we going national?
It's a great question. I think anybody will have the opportunity to respond to the RFP. Um, as some of these firms, and I think Mr. Robishaw mentioned it two months or so ago, due to COVID and whatnot, a lot of these firms may act nationally. They may be located here in, in Minnesota. They may be located elsewhere, but they, you know, work on behalf. That's something, Mr. Olson, that when they submit their RFP, we can determine who we wanna interview, right? It could be all four local. It could be three local, one out of state. It could be whoever we want. We get to pick who we wanna interview. And then they get to come here and, and, uh, put on their, their best hat of why we should choose their firm. Did that answer your question?
Yes, yes, sir.
Good. Any other questions or comments? Please note that there was a tweak here. Um, initially, it said, I believe, maybe four firms, and we'll say up to four because, let's be honest, we don't know who's going to, uh, you know, submit and reply to that RFP. So we, we thought four was probably a, a fair number. Any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain, uh, excuse me, I'll entertain a motion to consider approval to interview up to four superintendent search firms.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Mr. Robishaw. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Um, Ms. Tredway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robishow.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Tredway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you. Brings us to item 11B. Consider approval of 2021-2022 student handbooks. Superintendent Sesker?
Just a quick comment. We will change the dates that are on there. So you may have noticed there are a couple of dates that are incorrect. But we'll get all those dates. Other, otherwise, it's, um, just a couple of minor changes with the handbook.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2021-2022 student handbooks. Mr. Chair, also move. Thank you, Mr. Bellingham.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Steves. We have a motion by Mr. Bellingham, a second by Ms. Steves. Any further discussion regarding this item? Hearing none. Ms. Tredway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robishow.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Tredway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven, zero.
Wonderful, thank you. Brings us to item 11C. Consider approval of curriculum and instruction coordinator contract. Superintendent Sesker?
Yeah, so we'd like to, um, welcome Katie, uh, is it? Rotfeld, thank you, um, to our team. And, uh, we went through the interview process and, and Katie is our recommendation for hire for the, um, Assistant Curriculum and Instruction Coordinator, so.
Would Ms. Rotfeld like to come and?
I knew you'd be put on the hot spot. I shouldn't have warned you.
Introduce yourself and?
Thank you. I'm Katie Rotfeld. Um, I have been a mentor coach in Mankato for the past four years, and I taught at the elementary level prior to that for five. Um, and I had the chance to work with the teaching and learning team today to start do some planning for the upcoming year. And I'm just very excited to be joining this awesome organization. And I'm looking forward to learning a lot in the next year and on.
Wonderful. Welcome. You can stay there for one second, sorry. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, the curriculum and instruction coordinator contract.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Robishaw, Your Honor. Uh, we have a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Mr. Robishaw. Any further discussion? I'm sorry. Ms. Tredway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robishow.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Tredway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven, zero.
Wonderful, welcome. Thank you. So this brings us to item 11D. Consider approval of student success coordinator position. Superintendent Sesker?
Yeah, and Tracy, why don't you come up, too? She, uh, did a majority of the work on, uh, a lot of these different job descriptions. This, as you recall, uh, Sam Wolf left us to take a job up at Prior Lake. And, uh, this is the new job description. It includes certainly equity in there, but we wanted to make it more universal so that it approaches all students and not just students of color. So, um, the job description's very good, and we think that it does hit where our goals are for, um, for this, for this position. Uh, also, I will be the supervisor for that position, with, of course, with everybody's help on the cabinet, and just so you are aware of that. So, okay? And certainly Trace is here to answer all of your questions.
Board members, I'll open up the floor for any questions.
Again, is that in that, uh, job description that, uh, this person will report to the superintendent?
Yeah, if it's not in there, we'll put it on there.
Could you put it in there? I'd like to see that.
Yep.
Then, I was in the impression, when I first got on the board, that we take any student, no matter race, color, religion, whatever, that, you know, a student is a student. Whatever needs they, they need, we'll provide out of care of who they are.
That is correct.
So we're not dividing a, anybody into groups.
Nope, nope.
And just treat everybody, when they walk through our door, that, what, what do you need?
Mm-hmm. You know, you could put, uh, blinders on, on us and say, okay, you're a student of whatever.
And so that, I'm hearing different things in the community.
Yeah.
That we're dividing our students.
Yeah. I just wanna assure you that we're not. We always look at individual needs for kids. Uh, we've been doing that since I was teaching. That's a very, very long time ago. Not quite as long as you, John, but.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. But you're right, you're right on.
That was a good one, John.
Thank you, yeah. But we do, we look at individual needs for all kids. Um, and so, and we try to make sure that our goal and my goal as a, as a superintendent is, and I'm sure as all of us are, is that we wanna make sure every single kid experiences success and achieves success in some way, form, or, or whatever. Um, so, you're right. There, there, not all, not all people are equal. And we have to make some adjustments. And we do whatever we can to take away barriers and make decisions based on what's best for the kids and, and do the best we can with those kids, making sure that they succeed.
Basically what you're saying, we're gonna do the very best for any child that walks through our door.
That's, you hit the nail right on the head.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, did you say, um, Tracy, that this is a replacement for Sam's position?
It is.
Okay, and were his Sam's functions embedded in this job description?
Um, so they're actually infused throughout most of it. So when you look at the multilingual programming that's in there, um, the collaboration with our liaisons, moving into, um, the equity work with our district equity team. So it is actually his original job description, and what we did was expanded it. So we could really look, to Mr. Olson's point, at all students who have needs for additional intervention, needs for additional enrichment, and then being able to build a more comprehensive position, rather than just being focused on the multilingual education.
Yeah, I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I assumed that that was our goal anyway. Um, and specifically state that, but, um, how are we relating to the ELL students now? Because that was Sam's function, in addition to working with all students. So how is that now related in this job description?
So most of the multilingual components are pretty much verbatim what they were in the original posting. To be able to see how those multilingual services are created throughout our K-12 system, and actually our pre-K adult system, for that matter.
And I think, too, that the process would still be that this person would certainly be the expert within that EL piece of it. Uh, we just broaden the scope a little bit more, not just to make it seem like it's only for our EL kids. We wanted to make sure that it's for all kids. But that person, if they have suggestions on curriculum, or if there happens to be another newcomer piece that comes along, then that person would be intimately involved, and then bring their recommendations and suggestions to me. And, and then I, in turn, would bring that back to Cabinet and talk about that. So we still see this person as being intimately involved and being, um, bringing their expertise with that.
I do have concerns that this individual has agency. Um, I believe Sam, uh, experienced a, a great deal of frustration, and perhaps that was because there was some intent to change his position as he held it. But, um, I don't want the next individual to experience the same level of frustration. I believe that someone with this level of skill set should come and have a level of agency in helping to determine the, the programming that will move forward.
Just so you know, we are a collaborative team. So no one person does anything individually in our school district. Um, I don't, I don't make bad decisions. We make bad decisions if we're convenient. Hopefully, we don't make very many of those. I look at the Mayo Clinic and how they work. They, they do a team approach. It's not an individual doctor that makes a decision. It's a team that does. So we get information from any staff members that proposes a change or, uh, something that is going to improve our system for kids. We meet as a team and we collaborate. Um, we certainly weigh in on the expertise of that individual who may have that expertise in whatever that area is. And then we make a decision as a team and, and we go forward with that. So we, we try to protect all of our staff to make sure that none, not one staff is making an individual's decision, but that we are all making a decision for the school district.
Well, I certainly understand that. I do think, however, if an individual, for instance, this success, student success coordinator, has, um, input to be made to decision makers, because this individual would not be a decision maker, that this individual be included at the table to actually be able to dispense the information directly. I do have some difficulty around the very centralization of decision-making in our district. I think it has become quite insular to the Cabinet. So that's where I sit.
Other comments or questions? Courtney, can you still hear us okay? Do you have any thoughts or questions?
I'm all set. Thank you. I can hear everything fine.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just, uh, Tracy, could you explain in layman's terms what the multi-tiered system of support is?
I sure can. So, um, that is an updated and more broad scope at, um, how we are supporting all students and making sure they have high-quality classroom instruction. So we have that first. Everybody has access to the Minnesota standards. And then if they need additional support, that would be where the multi-tiered system of support comes in. What might be a tier two or a tier three opportunity to both receive intervention services, personalized services, as well as enrichment and extension. And so one of the pieces that this position will be able to do that maybe hasn't always been on our radar or hasn't had bandwidth to do in the past is really looking at how many of our students are taking advantage of advanced academics. And so, again, working with Ms. Rotfeld and having that team approach to say, how many of our students are taking our AP classes, our college in the schools, how many kids are completing our career pathways and pieces like that? And so that's where we'd be able to catch kids sooner, um, if they weren't being successful. And then we'd be able to provide opportunities for them to extend their learning beyond just the core classroom.
It was basically RTI.
It's RTI in a new, uh, more broadened frame. Yep. You said layman's term. I wasn't gonna throw more academic jargon in there.
That's right.
So how do we, how do we ensure this person's workload is not too great? I mean, 'cause I hear interventionist, I hear, um, ensuring enhanced, um, learning, I hear EL, I hear equity. It seems as though this is perhaps a position that may be overtaxed.
So one of the things that I love about the team approach Todd's talking about was being able to work with Nicole and looking at it from an HR standpoint. And what we did is we really looked at the whole teaching and learning team. And so having the opportunity to rebuild, um, Ms. Rotfeld's position as the curriculum and instruction, and then build a student success position, we were able to move some things around that maybe were, again, roles that maybe didn't have as many responsibilities and balance that out with others that maybe had more. But if you look side by side in job descriptions, they're all pretty equitable across my teaching and learning team. And my team also knows that it's a collaborative approach. So it's not one person's job to do everything on this list, but to be able to really, and that's our work from today, was really thinking about, okay, if my work is supporting intervention teachers, well, that's not just this individual position. That's also our coaches. That's also our administrators. That's also our classroom teachers. Um, and so that shared responsibility. But they would be the individual coordinating that work.
So who is on the teaching and learning team?
Yep, so that's Heidi Onis as our ABAD District Director and, um, Achievement and Integration Coordinator. Casey Rutherford, our Director of Educational Technology. Um, Leanne Lechtenberg, who will be, who is still our Assessment Coordinator, but will be leaving us here in a few months, um, as well as Chris Botham, who is our new Falcons Online Coordinator. And then, who am I missing? Oh, my Family Literacy Specialists, yes. And Katie, well, yeah, I assume, no, Katie is also, so our Curriculum and Instruction. And then our Family Literacy Specialists, um, that we have through the CLSD grant.
And is that, are they the, is that the last year for that?
Um, no, we have two more years with that grant.
Mr. Robishaw, did you have a follow-up question right there? Any other questions or comments, board members? Ms. Corkren, I have a question for you. And unfortunately, Drew, is there any way to pull up page two?
Oh, I'm gonna make it my computer.
Sorry. Thank you. Just let me know when you have page two.
Page two on Board Book or page two of the job description?
Yeah, I'm sorry, page two of the job description.
Thanks. Okay.
You got it?
Yep.
Um, so there's about, about, about the middle, middle of the page, there's a bullet point, facility, district, equity team. Should that be facilitate?
Should be facilitate.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then Superintendent Sesker and Ms. Corkren, just a question. Just, just walk us through and, you know, collectively, all the things you've said, um, probably leads back to the, the answer of this. But, you know, we have equity as one of our four, if you will, big rocks in our strategic plan. Equity's no longer in this job title. Just walk us through, if you would, or, why you took that out and where we're at today and the thought process behind that, if you would, please.
I wish Casey was still here, 'cause I think he said it very eloquently today as we were collaborating as a teaching and learning team. And his, his verbiage was, oh, see, now I have to remember, "the intentional infusion of equity in everything that we do." And so, again, I want you to think about Casey's role as Director of Technology. It's very easy to say, equity's not my work. But being able to- Um, but being able to say, nope, it's all of our work. And so that collective commitment, because that's the only way this mission comes to life, if it's something that we're all committed to, and it doesn't just fall with one single person. With that said, this individual still is facilitating those district equity committees. So it's still part of their primary responsibilities to make sure that that work isn't forgotten or that it isn't still supported. Um, but really wanting to broaden how equity looks and how it shows up throughout our district, empowering our administrators, working with our teacher leaders, um, and providing opportunities for them to learn and grow on their own equity journeys.
Thank you. And it probably follows up to Mr. Olson's earlier comments or question about any student walks in our doors, we're, we're serving them.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, that answers my two questions. Sorry, this is terrible.
I do have one more. So given the title Student Success and the first, um, couple bullet points, would this individual's role be primarily coaching of, say, English language teachers? Um, I mean, along with the other pieces, but that individual doesn't really have any supervisory role over any of the staff?
Correct. Yep.
Any other questions or comments regarding the Student Success Coordinator position? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Ms. Steves. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Ms. Treadway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Treadway, nay. Chad Wolf.
Aye, yes.
The motion passes six, one.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Item number 11E, consider approval of Workforce Development Coordinator position. Superintendent Sesker?
Uh, yeah, so this is the, really the same position as we had before that connects with our, um, business groups. So this person will often help out with apprenticeship programs, make connections with other businesses, go out in the community and make those pieces. The other piece that, um, we are looking forward to is, uh, as we push the career exploration down to sixth and seventh grade, this person will be working with Joe Sage at the middle school and then guiding some of these kids by the time they get to eighth grade into those pathways that we're creating up at the high school. So, um, a lot of work with this person and we're looking forward to this job continuing, continuing and the partnership we have with our business community.
Mr. Olson?
Uh, Mr. Sesker, who would this person report to?
Uh, this one is, uh, reporting to Mr. Benty at the high school.
Uh, why is that?
Because that's where the majority of those kids at the high school, they get placed. So Mr. Sage would certainly have some feedback and input on that, but the majority of this person's work will be the high school kids and making sure that they fit right into those pathways. Um, and then also connecting those kids to the work placements and the apprenticeships jobs. So it'll be Mr. Benty.
Again, is that stated in this or not?
No, but we put it in there. We put it at the high school.
Could you put that, who the person reports to?
Yeah, we'll put high school principal. Yep.
Other questions for Superintendent Sesker? Ms. Treadway?
Um, so when you say some of the, um, effort would be focused on the middle school, where, what, um, is there a, a curricular area that it will focus on? Social studies?
Mainly with the counselors and the career exploration and, um, working with those sixth graders, well, the counselors, through the counselors and the counselors working with those kids to put them, I'm not sure what the software is that they were using down at the middle school now. I'd have to go back and check. But the idea is the career exploration would be moved down to the sixth grade with the counselors that we have, and then they would help with those kids do some exploratories. We've done in the past, I know that Brian had set up some, um, I'm missing the term now.
Kind of like interest surveys?
Yeah, the interest surveys, the job things. We brought, we brought different companies into the gymnasiums, gymnasium for those middle school kids and, and all that. So kind of a, not necessarily in charge of that, but as a, a resource for Joe and the counselors to use to help set some of those things up. But the intent is, the goal is to push that career exploration down to a lower level.
Any other questions? Ms. Treadway, or I'm sorry, Ms. Cavalier, do you have any questions on this topic?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent Sesker, you said this was pretty much the same as the job before that Mr. Coleman had? Are there any differences?
Just the, more, more focus on the middle school.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's pretty much the same.
Okay. And, and is that essentially why we didn't repost it right away? Is we made a tweak?
Yeah, we wanted to evaluate too, to see if, uh, we had more feedback from, from Jamie or, or South Central College. Uh, by the way, they're also working direct, I should have said South Central College too. They're making a connection with them as well. Um, but we wanted to make sure if there's any more feedback from the chamber, South Central College, our folks, you guys, that we'd include that into the, to the job. So it's pretty, it's pretty comprehensive.
I think, uh, just on a personal level, I think this is a, a really great, uh, job that we have in our district with our seven-period day and the pathways and the, the interaction between the school and the local businesses and mentorship programs. And so, um, I hope you get a wonderful candidate. I hope you get a wonderful candidate in all the positions. But, um, just as these kids get older and, uh, get ready for workforce and all that stuff, I think it's a, it's a great position. So, Mr. Robichaud?
I, I think, uh, I would agree it's a critical position and, and it calls for a bachelor's degree. It doesn't call for educational background.
Correct.
Just a bachelor's degree in.
That's correct. Yep. We're hiring the best person in that piece. Obviously, if they have administration and, and, uh, education background, that's, that's.
They won't have administration with a bachelor's degree.
Probably not, but they could have more.
So then the comprehensiveness of this, um, and the experiences that they're supposed to have relating to the Perkins Grants and some of the other things that relate to educational dynamics. Uh, do you think that somebody who doesn't have an educational background is going to be able to pick this up?
Yep, I'm, Brian did really well. Yep.
Brian's Brian, this is somebody else.
It could be, yeah. I'm assuming that when we put the thing, I shouldn't assume. When we put out the job posting, um, when we go through the interview process and we check out candidates, that, um, we're going to make sure that when we vet them, they're going to, they're either going to have that experience or have the potential to get that experience. So, um, I don't know. It's hard to say, but we want to always get the best person. I'd be willing to, to train a person who we think is a quality individual that's going to be successful in our district. If they don't know a few things upfront, to go ahead and train that, that person. We've had a couple instances where we actually have hired people out of the business world. Um, they didn't know much about education. They've actually done quite well. But you're right. I, I would, I would prefer the education background, but we didn't, we didn't want to limit the number of candidates that we had just, just because of the education piece. So we're, we're going to try to hire the best person for it.
Well, that's a good strategy to hire the best person. I understand that.
Yeah.
Mr. Olson?
Yeah, when I talked to Brian years ago, and we both agreed that think outside the box. And he agreed, I agreed, so get somebody that thinks outside the box.
Yeah, that's exactly right. Yep.
This is where you find the box.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I will entertain a motion to consider 11E, the, the approval of Workforce Development Coordinator position.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
No, you said it first. At least, at least that's what I heard. So, uh, sorry Courtney. Um, we have a motion by, we have a motion by Mr. Olson, a second by Ms. Treadway. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Treadway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Treadway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven, zero.
Thank you for that. Brings us to item 11F, consider approval to hire Ken Hubert as Interim Activities Director until a full-time Activities Director is hired. Superintendent Sesker?
Yeah, and as you all know, that, um, uh, we had originally offered the position to Ryan Lukin, and he has, uh, now declined that position or resigned. And so we have a bit of a gap here to fill. Um, this is the, probably, we're getting into the busiest time for activities directors at the beginning of the year and, and Ken has graciously, uh, accepted to help fill in those gaps. Uh, you can see what that looks like from the employment contract. If you have any questions, I can certainly try to answer them for you.
Mr. Olson, Chair. I'd like to know Ken's opinion because, uh, um, he was the athletic director for many years when he was on the board along with, uh, Jerry. What's his pin, opinion on the co-ops? I'm very concerned with that.
He'll be here for the work session or the discussion, uh, at the next board meeting. So you're certainly welcome to, to ask him about that.
Well, we're, but we're going to, right now, approve him without knowing that information.
Approve, I'm sorry.
Did, approve him for at?
Oh, approve the contract for Mr. Hubert?
Without knowing that information.
About his opinion of the co-ops?
And the co-ops.
Oh. Uh, yeah. It's all I can say.
I'm, I'm very concerned with that.
Yeah, well, we're trying to fill, I, just so you know, we're just trying to fill a gap right now, because we are, um, we're getting pretty deep into the athletic pieces right now and some of the activities that are being scheduled.
Longer than what you think? I mean, could it last a year?
Hmm, I, you know, if, I mean, anything's possible. If I had to put a percentage on, I'd say maybe two or three percent that that would happen. I would say that we would probably find somebody in the next month or two and then Ken would help transition that person into that position and then that person would be full goal in a couple of months. So that's the way we view it right now. And that's the way Ken understands. I don't even know if Ken would agree to go that, that much further.
That's not what, I mean, at least that is what Ken's wife is believing.
Yeah, I'm sure Vicky probably has a say in this too.
Any other questions for Superintendent Sesker? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve Ken Hubert as the Interim Activities Director until a full-time Activities Director is hired.
So moved.
I'll second.
Uh, we have a motion by Ms. Treadway, a second by Mr. Bellingham. Any further discussion?
Well, I feel as though we are greatly blessed to have Ken, who has, um, been willing to accept this, um, to stand in during this very busy time of the year. Um, I have full confidence that he'll do a great job.
Wonderful, thank you. Uh, Superintendent Sesker, just as a discussion item on this, can you just briefly touch on, um, where we're at with the activities posting and when it closes? And just a rough number of how we've seen for applicants, just following up on Mr. Olson's question about how long this may last?
Yeah, so I can talk about, we've had about, right now, not everybody's submitted, but about thirty applicants for the position, which is a pleasant surprise. Now, not everybody's submitted yet, um, but we're looking at the list. It looks, it actually looks pretty good. The details, um, Nicole, do you have the details of when the posting ends? And then possibly the, you might have to come up here for the microphone. Sorry, she has the exact dates.
Hi, good evening.
Welcome.
The position is posted through this Friday or until filled. And as Mr. Sesker mentioned, we have a number of candidates. Um, we're anticipating the majority of them to be submitted by the end of this week, because when I look at it, it's, people are just missing one or two little things that they're probably waiting on from other people. So we'll, we have a good, good number of candidates.
Wonderful.
Then hopefully the interview process will be, uh, the following week. Uh, Mr. Benty is in charge of the interview process as a supervisor and there's already been a few people that have volunteered to be on that committee. And, um, I think it'll be a good process.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mr. Chair, we've got to be very careful. You've got, this person has experience and we can't have another circumstance where we hire somebody and then this person quits. Because there's a time where we can't get anybody, you know, into the year that, that everybody's settled down for the year. Then, then what do we do? So I would say that this person should have experience and not just, I think I can do the job and don't, off the sudden, two, three weeks later, ah, it's too tough, I'll go back to my old job.
I appreciate the input.
Okay. Thank you, Nicole, and thank you, Superintendent Sesker. Um, well, uh, we have had a motion by Ms. Treadway and a second by Mr. Belling. So with that said, uh, Ms. Treadway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Casey Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Treadway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven, zero.
Okay, thank you for that. That brings us, I'm sorry, we have another item on here. So 11G, which is, uh, to consider the leave of absence request for Mr. Kevin Dunagan. Superintendent Sesker, or you want Ms. Yocum to come on?
I think I can have, Nicole, would you mind coming up on that one, please?
If you remember right, this is the item that we added to the agenda.
Thank you. So Mr. Dunagan is requesting to take a point-two leave of absence from his teaching position. So he will continue this school year working as a point-eight teacher for us. Um, Mr. Benty has assured me that he's able to create his schedule with, uh, Mr. Dunagan taking a reduced position.
Wonderful, thank you.
Mr. Chair, what does a point-two reduction, what does that mean? I mean, it just, then he's gone like part-time. I mean, what does that really mean?
Good question. So what that equals is one class period per day that he is not there for.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, um, Ms. Yocum, is this a, um, mobility leave or a leave without pay?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Is this a mobility leave for a point-two or is it a leave without pay?
It's a leave without pay.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Yocum, is this for, uh, this is just for this school year according to this document?
Correct.
Okay. So if he, if he, whatever the circumstances are, if he wanted to do it again next year, he, he would request it and the board would approve it at that time or discuss it?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve the leave of absence request for Mr. Kevin Dunagan.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Steves, a second by Ms. Cavalier. Any further discussion on the title? Hearing none, Ms. Treadway, will you please, uh, please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud.
Aye.
Cassie Steves.
Aye.
Carolyn Treadway, aye. Chad Wolf.
Aye.
The motion passes seven, zero.
Okay, thank you for that. Brings us to item 12, other items of information. 12A is school board members. I'll open the floor and please share anything you'd like to share. Mr. Olson?
Maybe Cassie could do it because, but again, on the next voting meeting, uh, I'd like to add an item on the agenda. What's the policy? Two or three board members?
It actually has to be, uh, if the board chair and the superintendent don't agree to have it, then it actually has to be presented as a motion and a second and actually voted on to be on the agenda.
Similar to tonight?
Similar to night, to tonight, yep. And that's been the policy even before I got here in 2009.
It wasn't when I got on the, you could, a board member could, a single, could add a, you know, before the meeting, not at the meeting.
That's probably before my time, so.
I, it was way before. He was just a, you know, playing golf or something. But, um, how could we add that again?
You'd have to change the policy. Unless the board chair.
Well, we can, we can discuss, we set the agenda, so we can work with any board member.
So the chair and you can add that.
That's correct.
And it doesn't make any difference how many board members or if some other board members want to, I want to add it the next day, basically.
So MSBA, and you can call MSBA and ask them to, what I got from MSBA is that the board chair and the superintendent, based, this is strictly based on the policy. It's not something I made up. It's the policy that is out there, says that the board chair and the, and the superintendent create the agenda and they put the things on the agenda. Then we, uh, if somebody wants to put something on the, another board member wants to put something on the agenda. something on the agenda, then there has to be a motion and a second for approval to be placed on that agenda and a majority vote is, is what MSBA told me, so.
And that's exactly what we followed today.
Yeah, and John, I, John, you might have?
I've researched Robert's Rules of Orders and that is correct. Some other institutions, if they have it within their policy to add anything to the agenda requires a two-thirds majority, but what MSBA was recommending, what we, just drill to Todd and Chad, the simple majority and go from there.
Mr. Chair, could I follow up on Mr. Olson's question? What if a person from the majority on a previous action item requested that item be brought back for reconsideration? Isn't that a possibility? It has to be somebody from the majority that would ask for that item to be reconsidered, be brought back on the agenda for, for reconsideration, another vote. This is not adding to it, but bringing back an item that was acted on previously.
Mr. Robichaud, great question. I've been on the board for, this is, I'm in my seventh year, right? So, six and a half years, I've never been a part of any, any meeting that where a prior month or prior two months or whatever, right? Like, we'd be talking where a vote was taken and to my understanding, no factual information changed and then we brought it back for another vote. Historically, what has happened is if, if the board wasn't ready to vote, right? It would be tabled and we'd extend it.
Yeah.
But so, I, I've never been part of it, so I think that's something that we can certainly research.
I think you can do that.
Okay.
Ask for a vote that was acted on prior meeting for reconsideration if somebody from the majority brings forward that consideration. I'd ask our parliamentarian to do it.
I think that's something that, I, I think that's something between our, Mr. Bellingham and, and Mr. Sesker, between Robert's Rules and what MSBA, you know, guides to, I think that's, we'll research that.
It makes sense, so I'll have, I mean, you'll research it, however you say so you did last time, then we'll check to see what, what that is.
Mr. Chair, if I may, so Dr. Robichaud, I believe you are correct. I'm going to research that, but I do know that to reconsider can happen within the meeting itself. There can be a motion to reconsider, so say if you had a break, you know, down the road. I've never, I'll have to research if it's the break in the meeting, but I probably would agree what Todd said, I think it has to be a member of them who voted in the majority before.
Right, if it's somebody who voted in the majority.
That's good, I'll research that.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Sorry, Richard.
Other comments, questions, anything that board members want to share? The floor is open.
Can I just quickly say something, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
It is hard for me to participate fully when I'm virtual like this and so, I just wanted to extend a thank you to my colleagues on the board for all of their great questions. You ask a lot of what I'm thinking and then I don't want to repeat it, given the technical audio kind of difficulties. So, I just really appreciate all the thoughtful questions and observations and comments and know that I'm here, fully engaged, just, sometimes it's hard to, to talk in this environment. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Ms. Cavalier. Just so people who are watching or still in attendance, once again, we follow policy and MSBA guidelines and a board member, since we're no longer operating under COVID protocol, if you will, they have to be in a public place. They cannot be in the comfort of a cabin or their house and it has to be clearly read and stated and provided in advance and it is what it is, we're trying to follow the rules the best we can, so that's why she's in a public place. So, thank you, Ms. Cavalier. Board members, any other comments or questions? I will just say two things. We're at that point where I've reached out to Mr. Olson and Ms. Treadway as the three of us make up the Superintendent Evaluation Committee and we're starting to line up a time where we can look back on what, what we had for Superintendent Sesker's goals for this year and abbreviated year that we've had. We'll share that document with you once we've had a chance to meet and then also we'll be reaching out to everybody to start the process of a superintendent, what the goals are for the upcoming year and how we can get those in place and all that stuff. So, just a heads up, you'll be seeing some information. Once again, the committee, the Superintendent Evaluation Committee of myself and Mr. Olson and Ms. Treadway, we do not make any decisions that the full board does that and the full board gives input. We just act as a filter, if you will, to compile stuff in so that there's not seven people doing all things or whatever. Mr. Olson?
I'd like to make a request that we three meet in person.
Wonderful.
Some central, it could be here, place that, you know, it's not a quorum because it's not four, but.
You send me, I've got the email out to you, you send me your schedule when you're open for half an hour, hour.
Being self-employed, I can meet, you know, two o'clock in the morning if you want me to. No, I won't do that.
Tomorrow morning?
Probably.
Tonight, yeah.
You threw it out there. No, Ms. Treadway?
I also wanted to indicate that under normal circumstances, if our superintendent was not retiring in another timeframe, we would have had an interim mid-year evaluation and this year, we decided to go with the entirety of the year. So, we did deviate a little bit from, from what the intent of our timeframe is, but we will still have the opportunity to weigh in.
Correct. Anything else, board members? Mr. Robichaud?
Just one question, this is for Nicole. Are we fully staffed for next year?
Not yet.
What does it look like?
Looks good.
Good.
But I think it's safe to say we still have some people going and more people coming, right?
Correct, yes.
I think Jerry wants a job. I think, I think that's what's suggestion that he wanted a job.
No, I'd have to get up too early to go to work.
Okay. Any other comments or questions, board members? Hearing none, Superintendent Sesker, the floor is yours.
Yeah, so, appreciate the evaluation comments. One thing to keep in mind is that the cabinet staff is working on their, our, kind of our reports or the superintendent report that gives you kind of a year glance. So, if you want to be a little patient, wait till that comes in, that should be sometime in, in August, you can go ahead and read through some of those and that may refresh your memory of, of a lot of the great things that we did even during this pandemic. We had a great mental health meeting last week. We welcomed Janet Muth to our meeting. She'll, I think she's going to be a great asset to our, our group and help us lead that mental health initiatives that we have within our school district. I did a presentation at the University of Minnesota to a class full of future superintendents and principals, actually, there were a couple of practicing superintendents too. And my topic was using data in order to not necessarily pass, but better your chances of passing an operating levy or, or slash bond issue. So, I worked with Don Liptill, you guys may remember Don Baker Tilly, and it was actually a very fun presentation that we had in front of the soups and the, and the practicing principals and a couple of future folks. So, that was fun. I will be on KDHL this Friday with Gordy at nine-thirty. I'm going to bring Joe Sage and put him on the radio too. Emery, I'm not going to pull you this time. You don't have to come, no. And again, getting just a real appreciation to our, our leadership team and our cabinet for this summer. It's been a pretty wild summer between June and July, trying to fill vacancies and, and put things into place to better the, the education of our kids. And of course, Esther, getting the, finding staff to fill those positions based on those Esther dollars has been a real challenge. And a big thank you to our leadership team and especially our cabinet for, for doing this and pulling this all together. They've been putting in a lot of hours. So, and as Nicole said, we're getting close, so hopefully, we'll have everybody ready to go by, by fall and we've got some very good applicants and some, some, obviously, some very good hires, so we're really appreciative of, of all that work and we're looking forward to a really, really great start for, for 2021, 2022.
Wonderful, thank you, appreciate it. Dates to remember, item 13, dates to remember, information only, August 3rd, 2021 is our policy meeting, August 9th, 2021 is our next work session, August 16th, 2021 is our next finance meeting, August 23rd, 2021 is our next board meeting. And with that, item number 14, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Nobody else wants to go home?
Second.
Ms. Steves with a second. Any further discussion? Ms. Treadway, will you please do a roll call?
John Bellingham.
Aye.
Courtney Cavalier.
Aye.
Richard Olson.
Aye.
Jerry Robichaud. Cassie Steves.[1792.06]